Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting the Township Board's Committee of the Whole Board of members and guests. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trusty Bowen?
Present.
Trusty Brewer?
Present.
Trusty Kessker?
Present.
Trusty Mohita? Marcus President?
Treasure Field?
Here.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Here. Thank you, men and clerks. We have the agenda before extending our questions. That was not an update on Delta Cross's project. Sure, an update on Delta Cross. Anything else? There's second. And others in favor who are approving the agenda is amended, please say aye.
Aye.
I was supposed to say aye. Motion come. Motion carries public comments. Everybody aye, see me. And no one here for public comment. Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members.
And Brian, why don't you just give us that update on what you move up to cross.
Sure. I'll start off with that. The update is, there's not really an update. We're still waiting to hear hear from the developers, the nature, direction of their individual litigation. I was able to get copies of that, which I'll send out to the to the board and review to see that they're all there. But with help from our attorney.
I'm sorry, copies of what?
Of the lawsuits that are involved with that case between developers and partners.
So distribute that to the board members?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize, I haven't done, I just haven't had a chance to review to make sure it's all there.
Sure, sure.
Do that, but.
But just to clarify, we're not a party to any of those.
We're not a party to any of the lawsuits.
No, that's, we're not, but you know, we have invested.
The Consumers Credit Union has moved forward. They have their groundbreaking last week. And then now Olive Garden will move forward.
So those two projects moved forward because they're independent of, well, they own.
They're part, they were parceled out and are being developed by their corporate entities.
So would we know then, I don't need to know now, but you know, next meeting, what the projected taxable value would be for what would be completed in Phase One, assuming that the credit union and Olive Garden will be completed along with the other other parcels that are already here, the other development. Could we get those figures? Sure. Okay.
I have the, I can send you the figures for what will be captured in 2022.
Yeah.
Courtney and Ted have put that together. But we can also update that for finished, at least an estimate for finished credit union and Olive Garden.
Right, that would be helpful. Perfect, thank you, Brian.
Is that all Phase One or had it started?
Well, those two projects are in Phase Two.
Okay, but what about the at home? Is that our Phase One or two? That's two as well. So Phase One is completely done.
Part of Phase Two, but that's still under control of K2.
Right.
Whereas two projects, Brian, just they're independent of that now.
I don't.
Phase One is not completely finished. There's still a couple of sites that have not been developed yet.
And that's retail?
Correct.
And owned by K2?
Yes, I believe in Phase One, those K2 still maintains ownership of the property. Many of the parcels in Phase One have been condo-ed off, so. But the overall landowners.
I'm not sure Consumers is going to be completed by the end of the year, but they were talking. Or not. We got six months left, may may or may not. They're building three projects at the same time.
Yeah, if they weren't, if they're not complete by the end of the year, then Ted takes a basically a percentage of completion to go down the tax hole for next year.
And they wanted to know where Olive Garden was in relation to their building, and I didn't know.
Geographically or?
Yeah.
Right, right next door.
Right next door, yeah. Olive Garden is right in front of the church.
Okay. Right on the road.
Do we know, I'm sorry, when Olive Garden is going to break ground?
They're not. They're done with planning and zoning. It's just a matter of getting their building permit, which I think they've already issued that.
Yeah, man, some of them, they have their permit.
Yeah, so, I don't know. Nothing on our.
Um, there's a couple other items. Consumers are getting ready to start another gas main project, this more residential nature between Saginaw and Michigan and the Harriet and Julian region, so we're, that's going to be a similar to MetroNet. So a lot of people disrupted along the roadway and then their yard. So we'll, we'll try to, consumers have been very good about communicating the project or other engineering. We'll, we'll stay on it, just in case you get some complaints in that area, because there will be quite a bit of destruction done. Two things we're working on that are getting close. We still need to have a project agreement with LEAK to manage the pass-through of the Ultium funds. So they're closing, emailed over a draft for review, so that'll be a project agreement with LEAK, which they'll act kind of as a fiduciary and reimburse for our project. We're also working on a utility agreement with Ultium. So Bernie and Rick have spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best way to serve them, namely on their site. So that is a, taking up a lot of, a lot of time figuring out the best way to get to their new facility, which they have just submitted for their site plan also. So it's a lot of balls, kind of, we're trying to move forward at the same time, but we want to get some agreement on the utilities and responsibility and costs and that type of thing. So that will be something just as ahead of that will be coming to you.
So they're moving dirt without their site plan finished?
They have, they have solid erosion, sedimentation control. Verified that today with the Drain Office, so with that in hand, they can do the clearing and grading.
Okay.
This is very well.
Under way up there.
Last, we just came out of our, the CIA meeting, so we had a good discussion. Continuing with our pre-planning discussions and listening sessions, feeding into a master plan for the corridor. But today, we had public transit, so can E-Trans there, Disability Network, and non-motorized, I think it was a very good discussion centered on the corridor and opportunities and strengths and weaknesses, and looking forward, what can be incorporated into the corridor. So we'll be having another session next month. I believe with larger businesses, I have to check the schedule on that.
Are we still one person short or do we have everyone on our board now?
We have everybody.
Okay, so all this.
This was Brian Torax's first meeting today.
He needed to be sworn in. Just saying.
Anything else, Brad, that's all I have. Any further questions for Brian? And then, okay, thanks, Brad.
I'm sure he didn't vote on anything, so we're clear.
We'll move down to the committee of the whole discussion on marijuana ordinance and updates. Just to let everybody know, the, when we originally passed our opt-out, not allowing them in our township, we said we'd wait for things to settle, you know, as far as the state regulation goes, and see if we wanted to revisit it at another date. We have been asked repeatedly since then by various marijuana businesses if we are ready to reconsider that. We have recently have become aware that the marijuana industry is now moving to the next step of going to the communities, especially where it passed on the ballot, but the communities have chosen not to allow them to start doing referendum to allow them to come in. So we felt that, and we've been told Delta's one that they're looking at. So we felt now was the time to at least have the conversation as to whether or not the board wanted to revisit that issue or if we want to keep things as we currently have in place, but wanting to have that discussion as a board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian. I know Gary had a, I am having an attorney with us to walk us through what our options are, what's in the law, and see where people want to go from here.
I think you covered the introduction pretty well, Mr. Supervisor, so I'll just turn it over to you.
Yeah, in your package, you have a memo that I, excuse me, that I distributed, it's kind of an abridge portion of what I provided the board about three years ago for the prohibition ordinance. It's updated a little bit. It goes over the distinction between the three Marijuana Acts and how they're different types of uses, those kinds of things. So again, just a brief overview of that, I think that'll be helpful in discussion, and if you have time, if you haven't looked at it already, please do so. And then we've invited Attorney Dangle to come and make a brief presentation to the board, just a general overview of the law as it currently stands. I think she's going to provide some, some information and maybe some ongoing litigation elsewhere that may impact what you may want to do. And that'll turn it over once.
All right, welcome to the law. Well, I'm Lindsay Dangle. I'm the managing chair of Merit Spagnolo. We've been working with your township for a while. I personally handle both policymaking aspects, confiding on that, and then also the litigation aspects. So I see both sides, the policymaking and then the action that happens in reaction to that. So what I was asked to do for tonight is provide more of a general overview. I'm sure you're used to receiving confidential legal opinions, dealing with a specific factual situation. And attorneys, those are subject to privilege, so I don't want to tonight comment to anything about a specific fact situation or application of the law to those facts, is that something that you could have privilege? However, I do want to give you a general update on the law, where we're at, what's changed. I don't know your familiarity, so I know you, you addressed the issue back a couple of years ago. Starting knowledge, is, are people generally familiar with the different Marijuana Acts? Yes. Okay, well, I will do a brief overview, and if we need to go into more detail, please stop and interrupt me so that I can answer your questions, okay? Can I tell you to advance? Yeah, okay, wonderful. All right, so the main one that we're talking about, so as Mr. Bozick just mentioned, there are the Marijuana Tracking Act, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which is, or MRTMA, some people call it, which is what I'm mainly going to talk about tonight. And then there is the Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act and the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. So there's actually four, but two are medical. The one that made a big change for townships and municipalities is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. As I said, sometimes it's called MRTMA. This was a ballot initiative, and so we call it an initiated law. I'll tell you frankly, lawyers don't like initiated laws usually because they weren't as artfully drafted as possibly ones that go through the full legislative process. So sometimes they contain shortcuts in information, and that's part of why we've been litigating these inconsistencies and some issues. And it's still continuing, as Mr. Bozick mentioned, that I can help bring you guys up to speed on. But the general purpose of this law was to make it legal for individuals 21 and over to possess and use marijuana products under state and local law, not federal law yet. But also to regulate the commercial production for purposes of taxation and to essentially try to eliminate the black market and try to make this an open market where it's a competitive business. So, under the law, what's allowed? This is my simplification of the statute for you. So generally, number one, outside of a person's residence, somebody 21 years or older can have 2.5 ounces or less on their person. They can use it, they can transfer it to another person 21 or over. They can have marijuana paraphernalia or accessories. They can transport it as long as it's within the state of Michigan. But it always has to be somebody 21 or over, outside the home, two and a half ounces. Inside their own residence, individuals 21 and over can have up to 10 ounces and up to 12 plants in certain different combinations, so long as it's for personal use and not for sale. They can assist somebody who is at least 21 with either having their own. Where do we see this come up? This is caregivers that didn't follow all of the hoops of the Medical Marijuana Act. They can help somebody grow plants in, in their home. The bottom piece is the piece that Supervisor Fletcher was alluding to, which is that it also regulates the manufacture and purchase of marijuana products for those 21 and older. So that was kind of the crux in why this law was a game changer from the medical marijuana law, is because you didn't have a private process of somebody submitting a diagnosis in a doctor's note and then getting a card and then having private consumption or a stringently licensed facility. But adult-use facilities are still licensed and usually both locally and state, but it's not as thorough or as paperwork-intensive as processes the medical facilities have to go through. Just real quick, I wanted to mention this. There's a current debate going on as to whether or not the language is going to change from marijuana to cannabis. In the Act, it still uses the term marijuana, and they refer to cannabis more in terms of the structure of the plant itself and marijuana in terms of the product. However, there has been some discussion that that may be derogatory in how it's being used, and so I wouldn't be surprised if some of that language changed. But not to be here nor there, for right now, we're using the word marijuana in all of the Acts. And so, but just letting you know, in case you see that change come down the pipeline, that's something we're anticipating. I also want to cover three quick terms. These are not terms from the Act, but we now have a Cannabis Regulation Agency in the state of Michigan. It is a subsection of the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and they have issued some rules and guidance, probably since you last looked at this. And it includes a couple of these terms that we might be talking about under MRTMA. And so I just wanted you to generally know what they are. Adult-use establishment. This is the, the big umbrella term, anywhere where adults 21 or over are using marijuana, consuming it in any form. It includes, you know, retailers who are selling it, growers, producers, and what are called designated consumption establishments. Okay. So designated consumption establishments are where it's actually consumed on the property. Typically, they cannot also sell it unless they have a separate license. So a retail license is separate from a consumption license. But essentially, a consumption establishment just means somewhere where you are allowing somebody on your premises to consume marijuana products. Food and drink can be consumed on the premises. Still up in the air as to whether or not alcohol can. We do not have a clear answer on whether or not alcohol can be consumed at a designated consumption establishment. That's something that's still being litigated. I suspect the answer is going to be yes, but I do not have a firm answer on that yet. Yes.
So at these establishments, is it all edible form or do they allow smoking? And how does that square with the non-smoking ordinances?
So for the most part, what we are seeing is edibles. I personally think it's still up for debate whether or not smoking would be allowed at such establishments, especially because there's so many different formats for smoking. But those two issues have not necessarily been reconciled yet.
That's a great idea. It'd be difficult for staff to work an eight-hour shift.
Fair, fair. Fair statement. But again, something that hasn't necessarily been fleshed out.
Okay.
And you'd have both licenses in one establishment, both selling and the consumption?
Yes, so long as you jump through the hoops to do the, the different licensing. Yeah. Now that being said, if you can flip to the next one. So medical marijuana facilities are ones that only have a medical card. As far as shared use between medical marijuana establishments and designated establishments, it's not clear if that can happen yet. That is being carried out. It clearly involves separate licensing, but if you are selling the same product and you are delivering the same service, can there be a shared use? That's something where the exact language of exactly how that would work is being figured out. So, if you can amend, so where we're at is to what can townships do? So that quote that I have up on the slide is, is direct from the statute. Septus provided in subject for a municipality may completely prohibit or limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries. So there was an issue with opt-out, opt-in. Essentially, you were in unless you affirmatively opt out, which Delta Township did by enacting their ordinance. So the question is whether to continue along that route with prohibiting such establishments within Delta Township's boundaries or not at this point. If you want to continue down that road, legally, there's nothing additional to be done at this point. You just stay the course with the ordinance that you have. If you do want to opt in, and it's usually done via a combination of zoning ordinances, and you would have to amend your, your opt-out statute to repeal that and add a new one allowing such establishments. It's usually been a matter of billing and zoning and licensing.
Does it have to be in the zoning ordinance or can it be freestanding in the code?
It can be freestanding, however, most people are incorporating it into their zoning ordinances because of purposes of enforcement. If you already have an enforcement protocol for how zoning violations are handled, that same protocol can then be used to enforce the marijuana facility.
But we have the same enforcement.
Well, then.
And the code of order is too.
Yeah, then, then either way is fine. I will say the vast majority of municipalities are doing zoning right now. I don't know of a legal requirement that says it has to be zoning, but most people are going that route.
What's the advantage to doing that? If you can do it through?
It, like I say, it's usually in terms of enforcement, that zoning violations have an established protocol for that. And you know, I guess some people through the ordinances must not. I will say the penalties for certain things related to marijuana are prescribed by the Act. I'll get into that a little later, but they, essentially, you can only have several infractions. You can only have certain dollar amounts of fines. You can only have this kind of thing. But if you cover your bases twice, I don't see a legal prohibition on that. It's just most people tend to head towards zone.
Good question. Is any community who would opt it out and then opt it in, decided to opt out again? Can that be done?
I don't know. I am not aware of that happening. In theory.
Is it prohibited in statute?
Well, it's not expressly, they don't say you can't, you know, you may not do this. But it does, essentially, I think trying to unravel it, once you opt it in, would be very hard to do. Because then you, you have a permitted land use and individuals who are going to challenge stating that they, you know, relied upon.
And it's a legal business.
Exactly. And, and then you, you know, especially, like I say, normally how I see it isn't a zoning ordinance. Then you've got a grandfathered in issue, it needs to amend as everyone is, and those sort of things. So I'm not aware of somebody opting that out after opting in. But theoretically, is it possible? Maybe, but I don't think it's practical.
That's why I wouldn't want to put it in the zoning ordinance, because of the grandfather status.
The grandfathered in is the issue, but you are dealing with a, a property, right, essentially, right? And when you think about what a zoning ordinance does, is it regulates the use of the property for that specifically zone area. So I think it is, that's why most entities are going that route, is because logically, that's where it fits. Do I think that there's probably a way to do it separately? Yeah, but I just don't see it very often.
Yeah, I've got several examples of, you know, not zoning.
Correct, it's, it's just not very often. There, there are different ways.
If I just made just one quick backtrack question. Nothing prohibits an individual from growing marijuana in Delta Township now, just 12 points for less.
Correct, in their own residence.
In their own residence.
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, mainly as a township, what you're looking at is the industry.
Yes.
But I will say, as far as individuals, you can still place reasonable time, place and manner restrictions on how that is done.
Do we have those restrictions in place?
No, you have a complete prohibition.
I mean, for home, for.
For, yeah, we don't, we don't, again, as far as adult use in a private individual's home, you rely on the Act, but in terms of the, the business aspect, it's not.
Yep, and, and I'll, and I'll tell you as a forewarning as well, what, what actually it means to, what is a reasonable restriction is still working its way through the court system. So I don't have it clear, yes, this is what your ordinance should say regarding personal use or something like that.
Could they get a license just for, what was the one, where they could just consume?
Yes.
Okay, so that wouldn't necessarily fall under, that would be just a completely different license?
It's a different license, but it falls within your opt-out. So that's currently prohibited.
Right, so.
Yeah, make sure.
Okay.
So just a word real quick, though. Part of, a part and parcel of that, what townships can do is they can choose to regulate it, is this petition paragraph, which is the very next paragraph in the statute, which is what I believe Supervisor Fletcher was alluding to, is that we are seeing individual petitions, and essentially, if 5% of the voting electorate wants it on the ballot, then he goes on the ballot, and then they can have an initiative to force the, the issue. We are seeing that being done. I will say, I feel like it was kind of a, an influx right away. And now, you know, trickling, but it, it goes with the economics, right, as far as what, what people are interested in. So it's certainly something that we still see on a regular basis.
So is it 5% of the registered voters or 5% of the last gubernatorial?
Last gubernatorial. What the statute actually says is a number greater than 5% of the votes cast for governor by qualified electors in the municipality in the last gubernatorial election. So, yeah.
Are there restrictions on who can fund the petition drives?
It's all governed by the Michigan Election Law. So generally, there still has to be that, that open disclosure, but it's just like any other petition.
But it's covered by campaign finance laws.
Correct, that's perfect.
Correct.
Good. Correct.
Have there been successful? Ever been successful petitions?
You know, I don't know how many. I know for sure there have been some, but I don't have a number. All right, yes, so where I was going before with the, with the, except is provided in section four, so I just want to highlight that real quick, if we can flip forward. You cannot do these things. Um, let me simplify it down even, and thi- this is a summary. This is not a direct quote from the statute. I'm trying to, you know, simplify it even more. But um you cannot uh legislate your ordinances to allow people to have more than the two point five ounces or the ten ounces. You can't do that. Um, you can't allow people to operate a motor vehicle or recreational vehicle under the influence of marijuana. You can't allow those under the age of twenty-one to do the activities. Um, you actually can't allow butane extraction from the plants, which apparently creates a higher concentration use of vaping and causing dangerous issues. It's called butane hash oil. You can't do that. Um, you can't um have consuming in a public place or smoking marijuana. Where the person who owns the property wants to prohibit it. If it's private property, they want to prohibit it. You can't force them to uh allow it there. Um, there's cultivating marijuana plants in your own home that are visible from a public space. That is not expressly allowed by the act. Um, and that's something that especially by zoning ordinances and such, townships are are doing a lot of. Um, and then you you can't allow people on the grounds of a public or private school to possess marijuana. Um, so a couple of relatively simple things, but if you flip forward real quick, I'll highlight a couple of these. Um, so just real quick, um, consuming marijuana in a public place. It's uh where uh the person who owns the property or manages the property, because sometimes I join up with a property manager or something like that. Where they say no, um, and uh even if it's in an area that's designated for consumption within a municipality. So relatively straightforward, if the owner doesn't want it, we're not gonna force them to do it. Um, next one, Cam. This was the uh cultivating marijuana plants in its visible space. Um, so the hint there is can it be visibly? Yes, but it would have to be equipped with locks or other functioning security devices. They still wanna prevent people under twenty-one from having access to the marijuana.
I have a question about the public place one.
Yes.
So we could write our ordinances that prohibits smoking in our parks?
Yes.
And things like that?
There there are ways to craft reasonable regulations for a lot of different things. Um, it's just how you go about it.
Yeah, cuz I'm thinking about, you know, being out with the kids and you can smell it or whatever, so if people are smoking.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, there there is a very strong intention behind the act not to affect those under age twenty-one. And so if your regulations go directly towards that, more likely that they're gonna be deemed reasonable than not. Um, however, you guys have the legislating respo- let, you know, the reasonableness of what happens for a long time, and that uh tends to be a plus. Alright, next one here. Um, three additional quick things uh from section four. Um, really, it it's saying that it's different from the Medical Marijuana Act and the Medical Facilities Licensing Act. Uh, that those are going to be treated differently. We are known that. Um, it doesn't prohibit employers uh or doesn't require employers to permit their their employees to consume marijuana. There's nothing in the act that does that. Um, so as a township, even, you know, your your employees, you don't have to allow them uh to uh be under the influence of marijuana in some way. Or, you know, take a smoking break to go smoke marijuana while on work time. You don't have to allow those. Um, and. Alright, um, the the other interesting thing is it it did prohibit, um. But let's say that I I own a small apartment, you know, or a house that has four licensed apartments in it or something like that. I can't prohibit my tenants from using marijuana in my building. If it, you cannot put that as a condition in the lease agreement if it's somebody's home residence that they can't do it. Because again, the whole purpose of the act is that if they're over twenty-one in their own home, they can. So um that was just an interesting little aside that landlords have had to deal with.
I thought that was just the opposite. As a landlord, you could prohibit for a tenant, non-smoking in the residential.
Non-smoking, yes. Non-consuming, no.
Okay.
You can always prohibit smoking, or any anti-smoking state, so. Alright, um, so just going through the different options, as Supervisor Fletcher had mentioned, you you have a lot of options as a township. If you do opt in as far as what you wanna do. So number one is, yes, you can completely prohibit. But you can also limit the number of marijuana establishments. That's what I'm seeing most frequently is people are looking at the square area of their boundaries. Uh, the areas that they have zoned uh applicably for this type of use and saying we can accommodate this many per area or this many within our boundaries. Um, that is probably the the most common restriction right now. Uh, and it's been allowed by the court. So that I can tell you one hundred percent you can. Um, reasonable restrictions on signs. Uh, most people are just enforcing their uh current sign ordinances. Uh, but if you have a sign ordinance on the size of the sign or what, you know, no obscenity on the sign or stuff like that. Um, that can be applied against marijuana establishments as well. Uh, regulate time, place and manner of operation of these steps, just like you do for bars, just like you do for, you know, anything else like that. As long as it's time, place and manner and neutral, um, and the core themes are reasonable. You can have a regulation on when they're allowed to operate. Um, and the same goes for production facilities. Um, you know, sometimes you have regulations on certain hours uh that a production or manufacturing industrial facility can operate. The same would be true here. Um, you can authorize the sale of marijuana consumption in designated areas. Also for special events or for a limited time. So where have I seen that come up? In four twenty, uh, April twentieth events and stuff like that where people allow it for one day. Get this pavilion to go along with this license that's actually been allowed. Um, in most instances, we're seeing uh circumstances where you can't, you know, part and parcel things out. Uh, but the act specifically says that townships or municipalities can authorize use for special events in limited areas or in limited.
Marcus, is that part of Delta Rock, so you're? And and redwoods.
Different thing. Um, and then uh you can designate a penalty for violation. So this is what I was referring to earlier. Uh, Clark's question, um, it has to be a civil infraction. And the fine has to be a civil fine of not more than five hundred dollars. There cannot be a criminal punishment attached to a violation of this kind of ordinance.
And that would include where from a violation of the law of quantity and possession to a production facility? So there's no proportionality at all?
Well, it it's up to, could you have proportionality? Yes. Could you make it twenty bucks for an individual and five hundred for company? Yes. But it can't go over five hundred.
What about repeat offenders? Is there anything built in for that?
It just says of not more than five. So I I think if you wanted to, you could structure, but you'd have to start lower.
So it's per, so it's not per incident, but?
Oh, it's per violation. Okay, that the penalty per violation is five hundred.
I mean, some of our ordinance are written where if it's not mitigated, each day that the violation remains. Is a separate contraption.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, you know, it's, you know, the fee has to hurt or they're not coming pieces.
If you go, if you go five days, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right. The the other piece I'll mention that isn't quite clear yet is I talked about you can limit the number within your your boundaries. What is not clear yet is if you can limit the type of establishment, right? So if you only wanna allow retail but not the designated consumption. That's still a gray area right now. That wasn't put into uh the words of of the law. Um, so that's something that lawyers are currently discussing, uh, what to do with those. Like I said, the the vast majority haven't decided that we're not gonna limit the type, we're just gonna limit the number. Um, but some people think it makes more sense than if I'm saying, you know, from a zoning perspective, I'm looking at this many retail, I'm looking at this many commercial, I'm looking at this many whatnot. I'm looking at a different land use, so the number is different. Um, and that's like, it just hasn't worked this way for the court yet. Flip that one more. Um, so what I had before was kind of the land use piece. This is the licensing piece. Okay, so there's there's two components to allowing it. The licensure I is. Separate but also very intermingled with the state. So the state handles all licensure for these types of facilities entirely. Uh, sometimes the the municipality collects the application and then it goes to the CRA. Uh, and then they decide and they call and say, does this set township approval? You say yes or no, and then, you know, state handles the licensing. What the municipality can do is charge an annual fee, which is separate and apart from the licensing fee. Of up to five hundred, five thousand dollars, sorry, five thousand dollars. Um, but what we have learned about this fee is that it must be justified not as a profit to the township. But to recruit the cost of having to go through the licensure and supervising on this this facility for the application process. Um, I mean, I'm sure you guys had zoning permit fees and variance fees and all those kind of things. This, you you can't just set it at five thousand dollars with no basis. Um, that is clear. What number that tip's at, it really comes down to your justification and it's very fact-specific on how uh the five thousand dollars is justified.
Is it a one-time?
It's an annual fee, so once a year. Yeah.
Have you seen cases challenging that? Cuz that was one thing out of conferences. There are the states that most people are just charging five thousand.
Most people are just charging five thousand, correct. There have, and again, I, there's only been a handful of cases, especially with. We're 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 still working through the twenty-twenty backlog and most of this happened in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and so we're we're still. There's a lot of cases still in process, but some of what we're getting from the opinions is that you have to have a justification for what you're doing. So you have justification for why it's a profit and not, um, because otherwise it's being challenged as a tax. An unauthorized tax.
We know about those five minutes.
Um, yeah, you answered one of my questions. You know, I thought locally at least they were charging five thousand. Pretty much. But tell me about the application process. Can that, is that determined by each municipality in terms of who they're going to grant an application to? Or the process of, because I've heard some concerns about diversity.
Yes, so that is actually a huge issue right now, um, for how to do it. Actually, if you flip one more for me if you can. Um, so uh the licensing process at the local level. Um, so like I said, there's a state license that we don't have anything to deal with, but the state collects the fees and they have the marijuana fund and they do all of those things. Then there's at the local level, we can require. Um, at the local level, choosing between which, who gets what. So let's say you open it up to, let's even go real low, four. Okay, you open up four establishments within the boundary of each of the townships. I'm just doing the numbers, that's easy to divide. So, um, so you have four establishments. Um, what most people are doing is they're having a window where they are taking applications from, you know, this state to this state, apply. And then there has to be a competitive process for which applications get granted. Okay? Now, what that competitive process must involve is actually very interesting to me on these kind of things because it's currently in the court of appeals. So, um, there's a case pending Fire Farm LLC versus the City of Berkeley. Um, and at the trial court level in the Open County Circuit Court, the city lost. Um, the city had implemented a process where it uh put in, you know, not only are they going to obey the law. But also which established, they had a rate new process, right? Like a big process. Which uh beautification and renovation of buildings. Um, they they had a bunch, they had, I think, eight different qualifications in it. Um, the trial court really disavused four of them. Uh, they didn't like considering specialized aspects of the business, the the beautification of the building. Uh, you can't consider a resident over a non-resident, um, those kind of issues. Uh, and it's currently pending in court of appeals. We are waiting on a date to be assigned for oral argument on that case. But that is something people are watching intently, uh, in part because uh the City of Berkeley implemented a lot of what people had been recommending. Uh, as the competitive process, because how do you weigh a competitive process if you don't have factors? Um, you know, in a bid process, you have your one through five priorities of this is what we're considering. And they published it and had it out there, but the four lowest bidders challenged and they wanted to try for a level. So it's trying to uh work its way as far as, I'm hoping this year we'll get firm guidance from the Court of Appeals. As far as what we can use for that competitive process. Because if you were to opt in, I'd say that's step one. You you have to have your window for applications. Well, okay, maybe step two, because step one would be to legislate it yourself and then step two to open them. Um, and then uh for individuals to apply for who gets what. I would assume that you would get more than four applications. Um, just knowing who's participating at the state. And if that's the case, how do you weigh that while having a competitive process? Some some municipalities are just saying first four. We think that's our competitive process, you know, will you comply with the law? Yes, check mark. Okay, competitive process first four, that's what you get. Um, to me, if that's what was meant by the rulemaking authorities, they would have set on a first come, first served basis. Because we assume everyone's going to follow the law and not get kernel, so that's what that would have said. But it says a competitive process.
Do they have to get the state license first? Meet the criteria there before they apply?
Usually it's somewhat simultaneous, but some places already have a state license, but and they can just do a modification of it, but it, yeah.
And my understanding too from other uh local municipalities is people will pay the five thousand dollars with the application.
Yes.
But they may not be selected and they don't get the money back.
That is how some municipalities are doing it, yes. Yeah, well, just like a variance application or something like that, because the fees are incurred for the cost to the township would be incurred at the time of the application process. Not at the time of the award. That's the justification for doing it though. Um, but yeah, there's there's a lot of ordinances that are very similar to Berkeley's out there. And so a lot of people are waiting to see how this case shakes out. Um, if you flip one more, so revenue, flip one more for me. Um, part of the reason and part of what I'm seeing is kind of the sales pitch from the industry is, well, this is going to make your tax money. Frankly.
And they promised five thousand dollars for each application, which that we know is not true.
Well, well, no, not necessarily, not. Yes, they are, a hundred percent. Um, but the numbers just came out in March of twenty twenty-two for what the twenty twenty-one uh tax revenue was. And so that's why this spring, people have started talking more about the the revenue side thing. Because, you know, tax revenue into your township is an important thing to consider. So the way that the statute has it set up is there is a separate fund. It's the Marijuana Regulation Fund, and it's through the state treasury. Remember when I said the state handles all the licensing? All those fees go into there, okay? Um, their patient views, all those things go into there. Um, and then taxes uh are necessary things come out of that fund. Um, but generally, in addition to the six percent sales tax, so in addition to your local fee, your annual fee, that's what that one's called. There's a state licensing fee, and then on top of that, on top of the six percent sales tax, which is charged, there's also a ten percent tax on all sales of marijuana products. All that money that the state collects goes into this one. Now, I'll also tell you on a local level how money is handled. Uh, sometimes with the state, you have to have separate accounts, different things. People have figured that process out, so it's relatively straightforward if you wanna get into that, but it's a little bit more detailed than it initially appears. But there's a lot of steps to reach before you you get to the the near the of the banking. Um, if you flip one more for me. Um, so this is how the fund is split up. So fifteen percent goes to municipalities. Where at least a retail store or marijuana microbusiness is located and it's done on a per-business basis. Uh, another fifteen percent goes to the counties where it's located on a per-business basis. Uh, thirty-five percent goes to the school aid fund and thirty-five percent goes to the maintenance of the roads out of that fund. That's how that fund is paid out. You know, one more I put up here.
Oh, go ahead. So you said allocated proportionally, so if we had ten businesses, we would get more revenue than a municipality that had four businesses. Even if their four businesses sell twice as much?
Correct.
Okay.
So the these are the numbers that we just got in March of twenty twenty-two. Um, uh, forty-two point two million was paid out to sixty-two cities, fifteen villages, thirty-three towns, fifty-three counties. Um, in total, uh, I believe I have one more slide on this. Oh, no, I don't, but that's okay. Uh, in total, they they collected about one point seven million dollars. And then between what went to the roads and what went to the school, eight funding, where are those? About forty-two million dollars distributed to the municipalities. Um, I just pulled this up cuz this is the first page of the report. You can Google this. It is public information that is out there right now. Um, I just pulled the the townships on the first page. So you can see that for last year, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, the payment was just over fifty-six thousand per business. So you can see that for last year, the fiscal year 2021, um, the payment was just over 56,000 per business. Um, so, uh, to answer your question, plus we've gone, the, uh, Almina Township who had one got the 56 and change. Uh, if you look down to Bay, uh, or Banger Township in Bay County that had 12, they got 677,447. The math works out to be the 56 times that number. Um, yeah.
Just once, I, I have that link, I can send it to the board, so they have it for us, just to looking through those numbers.
Yeah.
What's the cap on facilities of aggregate?
You know, I don't know a cap. Um, I'm sure that there is one at some point, but I, I haven't had somebody reach that cap necessarily yet. I don't see more than, um.
So there's no cap in statute, it's just up to municipalities what they want to?
Or the regulatory agency, um, in their rulemaking authority if they could. But like, if you look, for example, there, uh, Ann Arbor is 25 right now. Um, so, I mean, it, it, I, I haven't had a municipality that has been like, oh, you know, we gotta worry about a cap on, uh, how many we're willing to have, um, where there's not necessarily seen that. If you flip one more, I did highlight the local, oh, maybe I did, um, all right, I'll, I'll, I'm sure it's in my notes here. Locally, if you wanted to know, um. So East Lansing had three establishments, they got 169,360. The city of Lansing had 16 establishments, they got 903,255,04. And Ingham County, cause remember the county is paid plus the local municipality. Uh, Ingham County in total had 19 establishments total and got just over 1.1, well, 1.07 million. So it is generating a fair amount of tax revenue, um, and in part, I, besides, uh, the industry's listening. I think that that's why some of the municipalities are considering this as well, is seeing the actual numbers play out and whether or not it makes sense for their, their township or their municipality.
So the only ones in Ingham are in East Lansing and Lansing. None of the townships.
Correct.
None of the smaller cities. Okay, um, that wasn't my question, that's a response to that. I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, so I'm assuming that the municipality, does not co-mingle money since it's federally illegal.
Correct. And again, where I said, it, it, it's more complicated than, than just put it in a bank account. But there, there is an established practice for what account you have and where you go and all of it. It's fairly standard across the community, so. And that hasn't.
Mostly a cash business.
The banking has not been.
No credit cards can be allowed, but they've managed to find out in my meeting with the, uh, hesitate to call them blackmailers, I'll try and think of another word, um, that, um, they found a way around debit cards.
I don't know all the ins and outs of that. Um, they have, uh, they tend to use about one or two attorneys throughout the state and so that everybody implements, that's how my practice. Um, so it would not surprise me if that's the case, but I know being industry, correct, that's what.
Cause they can't use a credit, they can't, federally, they can't take credit cards.
But.
At the retail level?
Yeah.
So marijuana is still.
And banks are federally insured.
Okay, I think we're getting weeds here.
Yeah, but I, I'll just say, and I'll, I'll wrap up. I, I know I got into a lot of detail here, but, um, basically, if you can flip forward another one for me, thank you very much, the, uh, in short, we know a lot more than we did three years ago about what's gonna be allowed and what's not. We have a whole new agency on this, uh, that, that its sole purpose is to regulate it and go from there. And they, uh, they've been on top of it, um, from that perspective, we have a lot of municipalities doing it. But as you heard me say a lot of times throughout the question, it's still working its way through the courts. We still don't have a lot of finite information. Um, what I do have for you all, if you'd like to take one and pass it down, is, um, in March, the cannabis regulatory agency came out with their, um, latest municipal guide. Uh, so that you can have straight from the source from the state of Michigan, answering some of those frequent, uh, questions. So, and that's also just Googleable if you pull it up. Um, but yeah, so that, that is a, a good source generally as an attorney, what I look to is, what, what do the people making the law say about the law?
Oh, just a question on all, uh, pending legal determinations. You mentioned, um, with regard to the competitive process that some people thought might be coming down soon. Um, but on the other aspects, a lot of them were so much, it just seems very challenging with so many provisions kind of up in the air about what municipalities can and can't do. It creates a lot of challenges trying to move forward and do so in a way that there's some certainty about what else, you know, how that will be. Other things, provisions will stand or not. So do you have a sense of, you know, on some of the other things that you flagged as currently pending in court? Um, when determinations may be made on those, like, is that something in the next year? Will it be a few years, just kind of that window of time to have a little more clarity about a lot of these issues?
Yeah, so, um, and you're just dealing with my gut impression. And unfortunately, I even, even the court of appeals was substantially backed up because of COVID. I mean, they, they didn't have hearings for a prolonged period of time, so that didn't help all of this that was brand new in 2019 start to work its way through the courts. Um, but I know that they're working on that backlog. I've, I had two cases before them recently. So I, I know that, um, things are starting to, not marijuana cases, but, uh, they are starting to move cases. Um, the one that I said I think I'll have an answer by this year, especially on the competitive process is because the record was filed in January. And so, um, we don't have a firm date yet, which means, which makes me think that's probably not gonna be before the summer, uh, recess. But I do think that sometime about before the end of the year, because it is such a pressing issue and there are so many municipalities hanging on, that it's something that they're gonna decide relatively quickly. Um, as for the other ones, I don't, I don't know. Uh, it would be a guess. I would say in the next couple of years, certainly, we'll have more, more certainty. I, I think we had hoped by this point in 2022 to have that certainty. Um, but I think you're seeing a similar issue, actually, with the No Fault Act that was amended with provisions during COVID. Um, that's gonna take a little bit longer to work its way through than normal as well.
Thank you. Take a second to talk about the whole referendum process. So if somebody does a referendum, can they just repeal our prohibition? And then if that passes, we have the ability to then regulate it? Or do they draft how they want the regulations to be? That's what goes on the ballot, that's what gets proven, and we lose all control over it? Can they create the Wild West where they say in Delta, there are no limits or restrictions on where you place them or how many or anything? And if it gets approved by the voters, then we have no say? So what are their options in going to?
Yeah, uh, in short, yes. Um, it, it depends upon the language of what they choose to initiate for the position as far as what you can do. Um, you, what the case law has said is that, uh, nothing in Mertmaugh took away the township's inherent powers to govern the uses of its land. And that's why again, a lot of it does come back to zoning, uh, or at least zoning type, um, purpose language, if you will. Um, as far as you have the inherent powers to regulate your land. The, the referendum can't change that. Um, the language in the statute itself just says, it's literally in the exact same paragraph, with whether or not the township can, you know, can prohibit or regulate. And then same paragraph, and by referendum, the voters can bring this at 5%. So I think it's arguable either way. I think if somebody were to make a petition, uh, that should be scrutinized very carefully, um, to make sure that it, you know, complies with, uh, Michigan campaign law. Um, because it's just like, you know, if I, if, there's really very few restrictions in Mertmaugh as far as what, what the petition has to involve. It's more so, uh, the campaign finance laws. And so it would be the same if I wanna, you know, create a law against bicycles being changed treats or something. And I have the process that I have to go through for that and see, exact same process.
But I think what I didn't get out of that answer, what I think I heard Ken's question, or I wanted Ken's question to make one or the other. Um, if there, if there is a, if there is petition drive started and we know that, because they gotta get petitions, um, then can we enact an ordinance? And if our ordinance is in place before they file the petition, if there is an ordinance in place allowing, can a petition, if, if there's an ordinance allowing right now, can there be a petition drive to change the numbers set in that ordinance?
So you're, you're saying in the, in a situation where a township has an ordinance that contains regulations as far as the number of facilities, could there be a petition drive to change it? Um, could it be attempted? Sure, I don't see that as having high rate of success because the, the act specifically says that townships can regulate the number, uh, and that would be taking away an inherent power that was granted by the state.
Okay, so that's, that's one, but the other piece, if, if a petition drive is started, can we then go through the?
The motion is basically preempting.
Preempt.
Um.
There's, I mean.
Yeah, in, in theory, potentially, yes. Uh, but it, it all depends on how, how the process goes about doing that and timing and whatnot that's very fact specific.
Cause I understand if they, if they already have a petition ready for the ballot, then you cannot preempt it.
Right, but they have to.
It, it depends on where everything's at.
Right, they have to, if you start the, if you start the ordinance process, the day they start the petition drive, if your petition, if your ordinance goes through the process and is, and in place before they file the petition, I'm asking, can they, can they then say, this was done in response to a petition drive and shouldn't be allowed?
Can they say that? Yes, I, I mean, anybody can say anything, that's really where it comes at, right? But, um, it, it, it would be very fact specific on exactly what had happened. Okay, thank you.
And they could, they could still go forward, so say, we hear a petition drives underway. We passed an ordinance that says you can have one dispensary in, in Delta. If their petition says they're gonna be 10 and they get it on the ballot and voters approve it, then we have 10.
Right, she just said you, they can't preempt.
Right, that, that, the statute does specifically say that the township can regulate the number within its facility and, and courts have been supportive of that. So the township can regulate the number on a hundred percent.
But isn't it initiated while the township regulates? Isn't, isn't it an ordinance initiated by the public and approved by the voters, the same thing as the township regulating?
Again, this is one where it would depend, i- if we're talking which piece of the process they're, they're in. How's that? But the, the statute very specifically says the petition relating to that first paragraph and then every, the, the number, the ability of the township to regulate the numbers in a separate paragraph of statute. So I would argue that those would be separate. But again, this is, is a bit of a gray area and courts, uh, do what they do. So, uh, things can change, but it is, I will say for these, it is very fact specific on what has happened. If you've got a situation where a township comes in and it's clear to the courts that you wanted to, you know, take away the role of people or something, is that probably gonna go your way, you know? Is it, you know, uh, but it, so it all depends on, on how it would play out.
I'd like to go back to the, um, the tax, so it's 6% sales tax.
Yes.
And 10%.
Marijuana fund tax.
Marijuana fund tax, and that's on retail sales or is that on wholesale sales as well?
You know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so if there is a manufacturing facility, um, as we have in Windsor Township and adjoining township, so they get, you know, the increased property value taxes, but we don't know if there's money from that facility that goes into the marijuana fund at Laura? And if any of that money is being distributed.
I can find that out for you if you'd like, cause I, I, I would just have to go back to the specific part of the, uh, statute because I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, the gut would say that it should because their entire purpose was frankly, the tax.
Well, yeah, cause there's no, there's no incentive from a municipality to have a manufacturing firm if it's just, you know.
Correct. Um, and, and like I said, the whole point was to establish a clear taxation, get rid of the black market, move it this way. So my, my gut would say yes on that, but I, I just don't recall my course.
The numbers, okay, so, thank you, I just.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Any other questions for the attorney? Basically, are you, tonight, all we need to decide, uh, we all decide what we want, whether or not we wanna make any change at all, if we don't wanna do anything, then we don't have to do anything, we just move on. Or if we think that, uh, it may be to our benefit to enact our own ordinance and regulate it on our own, as opposed to waiting until there's a, a gun being held to our heads, so to speak, by having a ballot proposal out there for the voters. So that's kinda, I guess, the decision we have to make. Do we continue, just keep our prohibition and continue to watch and see what's going on? Or do we start the process of, uh, coming up with our own ordinance? And then, you know, we can let staff reflect that draft and all that stuff as we usually do.
I honestly have not heard from a single resident bringing up this issue about the need for us to adopt an ordinance. And I feel like given all the ambiguity with legal challenges and not having that clarity about how we could design the strongest ordinance for our community, it's, seems to make sense to kind of keep things as is for now and, and make a decision, you know, wait to kind of make a decision, do something different.
Yes.
Oh, I don't share that opinion. Um, I'm beginning to see what's going on around us. I'm looking at it from a couple of perspectives, one is, um, revenue. But these places aren't deleterious to their communities. So I mean, look, look at the buildings they're putting up. I mean, they're nice, they look like modern office buildings. And from what I understand, the demographics of the people who go in are people like us and elderly people and all kinds of reasons. And, uh, so it's, it's not a drug hangout where these people are going, what was perceived to be the first. And so they're pretty well respectable establishments. Um, and I, I would suspect that, you know, our residents, I'm trying to remember what the breakout was when we had the, uh, referendum on the state ballot and how many residents in Delta Township voted for legalization of recreational marijuana. It was well over 50%, if I remember right. And I suspect that's probably increased. And, um, I think this amount of money that's being distributed on a purpose facility basis is only gonna rise. And I can see it easily going to a hundred thousand dollars per facility in the next year, two years at the most. And, you know, if everybody else around us is doing it, you know, why are we burying our head in the sand? Because of, you know, every T and every I has to be dotted because of the uncertainty. Everything that we do isn't a hundred percent certain anyway. My question is, I think the township would have respectable locations for that. But, you know, what areas along the corridors, I mean, we keep talking about improving our corridors and, um, you know, this might be an additional way of doing that as well, not just sagging on, but it could be a long way to go. So I would like to see, you know, staff look into like, if we were going to place these, uh, facilities, you know, what types of facilities, where would they fit, given the prohibitions, uh, that they could be close to a school and then things like that? Where exactly in the township where they fit and might give the boards comfort level? As to, um, you know, maybe the amount of the facilities, the type of facilities where they could possibly be, if anybody was even interested in pursuing that. So that's the kind of information I would like to see, and, um, I would be in favor of pursuing this.
They agreed to make more of that building nice, right?
Well, that, that came in mind.
Right.
Not even that.
Don't even mention that.
Um, no, I, I concur with Andrea all the points she's made. Um, I haven't had anyone come to me expressing, gosh, why, why isn't Delta doing this? I know the vote was, was a, a large, sizable vote. Uh, you know, there's 16 in, in Ingham County, nineteen.
Nineteen.
There's 20 in the city of Lansing now.
Twenty, and they have a drive-through.
And they, they have, they, they're gonna permit up to 20 in the city.
Yeah.
Since that, since that.
That was 2021.
Yeah, so now I just read an article in the city polls talking about, you know, recent.
Yeah, so I think access is not an issue for our community, really. It's five blocks down, I don't know, and you're, you're, you're in, in Ingham County. So for me, I, 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 I.
And you're, you're, you're in, in Ingham County. So for me, I, 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 I'm not ready to support it. Um, I, I wouldn't be interested in saying yes to it at this time. Um, it just hasn't bubbled up enough. And I think if it does, we have some options um, where we can regulate it if we need to and do something different. But I, yeah, I, I think that access is not an issue for people. They're, they're going into Lansing to get it, for sure, without a doubt. And I know that there's some revenue that comes with it, but there's challenges too. And I always work, worry about capacity with our team, our staff, adding more and adding more and adding more. We have a lot on our plate. Um, and I'd rather stick with what's key than adding on something new at this point.
Very. I, I'm not in support of that. I haven't been. I guess it passed. But the same ordinance that everybody voted for, or the same state law that everybody voted for that says I can walk down the street with a joint in my pocket. Also, they also voted for municipalities can opt in or out. And I'm an Alex Stone. I think Andrea made a lot of really good points.
And my concerns fall in the realm of public safety and public health, that we don't know the impacts. We haven't heard from our deputies or from our, our public safety uh, people. Back when the referendum was up, I spoke to some law enforcement people at the time and they were not in favor of it passing. And so I wonder if it has changed. I would like to see numbers and data, you know, what's going on in Lansing. Are, is there more pressure on their deputies, on their staff, that sort of thing? But also through the health departments and public health issues. Uh, and I also wonder, as we have seen in many different ways, how long until these businesses start agitating to lower that ten percent? And even if the industry continues to grow, they say, well, why should we have to pay ten percent when other industries don't have to? And so then they're making billions and we're making smaller and smaller amounts, like the, the dark stores. Um, and the last thing I wanted to say was, and of course, my brain has, I've lost it. I can't remember, but I am not for it. No.
Um, I'm, I'm not for it, but what I wanted to ask is, if we write anything or um, on an ordinance, does that, it doesn't mean that we, we're opting, opting in, correct? It just means that we're. Yeah, but it would mean that.
Yeah, we do, if we, the options are to do nothing, which is to keep our OCTO in place, allowing these businesses in Delta. Or we decide we're gonna pass an ordinance that allows whatever number we decide we want to.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not for it. I just wanted to see. We revisit it later down the line, when I think there was, um, as Andrea pointed out, some ambiguity. Um, there still wasn't a clear definition on, on a few of these items on here, so I'm, I don't feel comfortable with it. Go forth with it.
I would actually, for probably maybe one of the first times, I'd actually agree with Dennis. No, I, 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 we're a community of thirty-three thousand residents. The industry is looking at Delta Township, they're gonna be here, they're, they're gonna do a referendum at some point. So the question is, do we want to get ahead of it ourselves and, you know, we don't pass an ordinance overnight. It takes a while. So I think that it'd make more sense to allow for it. Our residents voted to allow this in the first place by a significant amount. I have personally been at Angela Whitworth's coffee hours where Delta residents were haranguing her. And you know, why are things taking so long for the state to do the rules and stuff where they were really harassing her? Because they're having access issues to get the marijuana they wanted, and they were mainly seniors that were asking at these coffees. So definitely uh, people in Delta want it, people want to be able to buy it, they want the access, they're willing to approve it. The industry is certainly looking at Delta Township, so there's, they're coming. So yeah. The question is, do we wanna deal with it with a gun to our head? Or do we want to just be proactive and, and take our time now and draft it the way we want it? And limit it as much as we want, you know, we can make it very limiting. Um, I'd like to.
But a referendum would be a good way to poll public opinion, you know, um.
I just don't want them drafting it.
Yeah, that is a concern, but you know, what if they can't get five percent of people because they read the draft and they don't like it? Or what if they get the, the votes or they get the petition signatures and then it's voted down? Cause it, you know, it's one thing to vote for a statewide, you know, abstract, yeah, marijuana can be legal. It's another thing to say, in my township where I live, where my kids are, where my workplace is. You know, I don't know that people are necessarily going to be supportive of that.
I think people would be surprised at who would. Who in their neighborhood are using the product.
It's not about you.
Yes.
It's not about you.
But you have to buy it somewhere. And if they're using it, they're not opposed to have any facility on Saginaw.
Oh, but you have them in Lansing.
No, but it would be interesting to know, um, if we were to at least do some research and determine like, where would Delta Township fit in, what would be our capacity? So we'd have that base level of information, like, how many facilities would there be before it was saturated? How many would we want to limit? What sort of industrial production facilities would fit within the township? If a um, entrepreneur wanted to build one, I mean, with a big one over in Windsor, but I don't know. I mean, would, would there be such a, an opportunity here, like in an industrial zone, for example, for someone to invest in and build a facility like that as well? I, I don't know, and we don't have that information. And we would have to have all of that in order to determine, even to make a decision if we were gonna consider an ordinance. So all that information and that research has to be done prior to that time anyway. And I don't think it would hurt us to even, you know, look at that.
Who has the time? The resources to do it.
Well, let the staff answer that. And I think we're making an assumption here.
Well, it sounds like you're asking for a market study. I don't know if anyone in the townships wants to do something. And I mean, I mean, we can come up with numbers, but you know, to your point, Dennis, what are they, you know, what are they gonna recommend?
Well, not to put it at the point, but you know, if we have a much more rural township next to us that has a major production facility and multiple steps, um, and we have a bunch of retail outlets, that's the wrong term, I know. Say you're Lansing and East Lansing, uh, it's not hard to figure out the population base and.
Well, yeah, was there a formula that they used to come up with their?
I don't know. Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if there's something out there.
No. Consider that, we'd be asking those questions.
If you wanna analyze, let's, let's take Waverly and Saginaw. Just it's the commercial corridor. I'm still gonna argue, but we don't do it with, with zoning, so I, I'd like to argue that, but anyways, but anyway, and I don't mind administering it. But uh, you know, you can make a case that for the commercial corridor, Saginaw, from Broadbent to uh, Waverly, what are we looking at? Four, four mi-, linear miles, maybe one for each mile. Same thing along Waverly Road, maybe, you know, the four miles, okay, one for each mile. Um, that kind of thing. But in terms of what the, you know, a market study, I don't know.
No, I want the same market study, I'll just say, get a comparison of what other communities have done.
Which is way more than East Lansing and they have a larger population than us.
Andrea, yes?
Um, so just a question, cause I haven't been approached by anyone who's suggesting or proposing to initiate a petition in the community, in Delta Township. But those that are, is it, and, and I don't know who of the board or even with the township staff, um, may have had conversations, but is it coming from those who want access and want personal use? Is it coming from those that looking to operate businesses? And are those retail? Are those consumption? Are those manufactured? Are those growing? Like, where's the interest?
No, it's the industry, it's the industry. It's the folks that have been up here before our board from time to time saying, we want to come, are you guys ready to reconsider your uh, ordinance at this point? They're, they're the ones that would fund it and want to come in, the big players.
Okay. That's pretty much controlling the market now.
Exactly, the big companies, Kelly Kaufman, already been hired to make it happen.
So if we did ask for, you know, information from East Lansing, Lansing, Windsor about their facilities and all that sort of thing, I think we should also direct staff to ask for, do you regret it? Do you have any regrets? Do you have any lessons learned? Do you have anything that you would do differently? Um, since, you know, we can't opt in and then opt back out, you know, we wanna know, well, how's it been? Are you happy with it?
And I'm gonna put on the table, we don't have staff to do that right now. We have a GM plant that we are up to our eyeballs with. We have our, our water treatment plant. And if we want all of that information, then we need to hire a consultant to go do it, because we don't have staff to do it. In fairness to our staff, we do not, we have projects that we, and that's not even the substation. I mean, we have projects that we have a lot of skin in the game on now.
And the St. Joe Parkway. Good. And major. I mean, is this something we can revisit, you know?
Well, you would visit when you hear the petition.
The answer to your question is yes, we can revisit it. We're not in the position to make a decision by any way for purposes of this meeting, let's discuss.
Just remind people, you know, while they can always go down the street, that's probably the loss for Delta Township. And I look at it from a revenue point of view, and I'm not convinced that there is any deleterious crime issues, if you look at the people that go in this place, um, these places. And you know, the pretty upscale facilities that they have are really tightly regulated. And I just would be remiss is that, you know, Delta Township, because we're concerned and hesitant that everybody else is going to be getting increasing amounts of revenue that we could probably offer our own residents and maybe Al County a little bit too, um, that we could use for specific purposes for our own quality of life enhancement here in Delta Township. So that's, to me, is, is an equal consideration, is the lost revenue potential.
Well, my public safety concern is not about the customers. It's about the people who were in the business before it was legalized. That, you know, did that black market industry just disappear? Or is it just operating differently because they don't wanna pay six percent sales tax and the ten percent marijuana fund? Yeah, so how does that impact communities?
Well, my understanding, and I'm not an expert in this, but is that the black market continues to exist. But it's the mainstream people, it's the, it's the middle class serbanites that are avowing themselves to the service. And, and you know, now we're saying, well, go to East Lansing, don't go to Lansing. And probably Al County, there'll be some facilities too. So I just don't think it's really the service to our residents. And I think we might be having whiners on this issue.
At the end of the day, my position is not more based necessarily on you and thinking that uh, I, I think it was a mistake to pass the law to allow for marijuana, to be honest. Uh, I, I don't think that it's a good thing overall for the state. But I think the question boils down to, are we, do we think that we're gonna be able to not have this forced on us somehow? And I think that we are, or quite frankly, we've been told we are. Um, you know, the question is what, what election they put it on a ballot, but uh, we're a big player. There's a lot of money, and I say big player, I mean, this population, big community. There's a lot of money in this, so the industry has a lot of money to spend to hire consultants and petition gatherers and, and everything else to make a referendum, uh, go on the ballot and, and get approved. And it's just a matter of time before it comes here. And um, I just don't like to see our staff working with a gun to our heads, you know, because now we know the officials are out there and all the things we're asking them that we're saying, we're told they don't have time for, and they will all of a sudden now have on a rushed schedule, find time to do, because we will have a very small window in order to enact ordinance in order to head it off. I always take the position, I'd rather have us controlling how it's gonna be in Delta as opposed to letting some outside group draw this up. That's how we got this mess in the first place. The, the marijuana users drew the medical marijuana, that thing was a total mess. And they got it on the ballot and it got approved by the voters and everybody's like, what the heck do we do with this mess now? I don't want us to have a referendum pass and say, okay, now we got a mess, let's figure it out. Let's uh, let's regulate it, uh, and control it on our own. But if we think that we can safely pass this by on our residents, we'll all vote down any referendum. I think that's the, that's the, uh, the, the question now we need to ask ourselves. Whether or not we feel confident that it's not gonna pass. If a bad ordinance gets put on our ballot, that will allow way too much.
So, and to that point, because it's a valid initiative, even though it's a citizen initiative, are we prohibited as a board from taking a position on it?
We certainly can campaign for against it as a board, down to violation.
We can't take a position.
We can, we took a position on the um, knowledge for um, the road improvement.
Was that before the law? It was, I'm doing such. I don't think he took a position. I think we just put a, we put a factoid, you know.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah. We didn't pass any resolution.
Township funds to advocate.
Right, you can't do that.
So we, we won't be able to take a position. Try to persuade our residents to go forward or against it.
And I'll see who funds a campaign against the referendum. You're gonna have lots of money spent by the industry and you're gonna have nobody really spending any money to stop it from happening.
You wanna bring it up again? We just say no at this point.
I, has anybody changed your opinion? We don't have, there's not the support from forward, so. I don't see, so my summary has changed in the last two minutes. Then uh, that includes our discussion at this, for this time, and then we can move on to our next item, which is to go into closed session. But before we do, and everybody in the audience, have anything they want to say before we go into closed session?
I'll just mention that after the specific questions that I have answered to, I will follow up by you. So you, you have that specific thing.
Great, thanks. Appreciate the information. Yeah, it was very helpful. So somebody like to make the motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Delta Township Board adjourn to closed session at the request of the Township Manager under the Open Meetings Act, Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen point two six eight, section eight D, to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time an option to purchase or lease that real property is a change.
There is support.
Sorry.
There is support. Um, member?
Your?
Yes.
Marcus, yes?
Yes.
Rusty Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Rusty Monique, Tom?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll go there.
Room B.
A lot.
Okay, Bill. You're adjourned, don't possession, does anybody have anything, uh, files over here? See, that was a note for the business first, we're adjourned.
It's whole, you're marked.
Yes.
Their ones are ancient.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's chilly.
Yeah.